Okay, let's bring the meeting to order of the border, Amador County Border Supervisors. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I like doing the pledge of allegiance. Okay, so we came out of closed session. One A was direction to staff. Two A is no update. Three A is denied claim. Three B, denied claim. Three C, denied claim. Confidential minutes were approved. Okay, public matters not on the agenda, discussion item only, no action to be taken. Any person may address the board at this time, any subject within the jurisdiction of Amador County Board of Supervisors. However, any matter that requires action may be referred to staff and/or committee for report recommendation for possible action in subsequent board meetings. Please note there's a three-minute time limit. No rush.
Wayne Garibaldi, and I have the dubious distinction today of being representing the Amador County Historical Society as their treasurer. I've been the treasurer for about 15 years. And I know that people often use this section to come and ask for something or to come and complain about something. I'm doing neither this morning. I'm just actually coming to thank you, each and every one of you. The Historical Society received its ARPA grant recently. Okay, it was around $24,000 makes up for fundraising that we weren't able to do during the COVID thing. And that's an amazing thing that the county and the board supervisors approved. And I just wanted to come and tell you thank you that way. In the 15 years I've done this, I don't think the Historical Society has ever received, you know, a grant. And as you guys know, the Historical Society operates the museum on your guys' behalf. So thank you very much for that. We're also, the Historical Society is transferring $35,000 of its own money and its general fund over to the livery project. All of these funds are going toward the livery project, which is the building that whole houses the wagons and the stuff that's kind of falling down and ready to be demolished that way. Just to give you an update, we're at around $200,000 that we've raised so far toward that project. Unfortunately, the project's about $500,000, so we've got a ways to go, but we're working on that. And we hope to demolish the existing building where everything is at either this next month or in April. And we, if you're not aware, we enclosed where the locomotive used to be, and that's where all the artifacts that are currently in that building are going to get moved over to. And I think really that's, unless you guys had any questions for me, that's all I came to do was tell you thank you.
You don't want to say anything about how bad the roads are or anything?
No, I mean, I got lots of complaints, but I'm in an official capacity this morning.
I appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
I can say one thing on the timing is my brother-in-law visited the museum and he was very impressed with it on Friday. So, and he, I think Ms. Fox was one of his tour guides.
Well, she's the unofficial ambassador for the museum.
Yes, she is, but she did a wonderful job. My brother-in-law was very impressed.
Thank you, guys, again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate the efforts, Wayne.
Well, we appreciate the support.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, approval of the agenda. So moved. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Approval of items on consent agenda.
Um, under, I have a couple items I'd like to have removed or at least voted on separately. It would be item six F and six G. Reason for that is my two representatives on there no longer wish to be on those committees.
I'd move approval with those two items removed to address later.
Remove.
There's, well, I'm okay if I'm going forward, just not, not, on item six F, could we strike the appointment of Daniel Dentone as District Five, Ag Advisory Committee representative? And on six G, could we strike Jerry Wright as an alternate on the airport advisory committee for District Five? That be okay, Greg? And still go forward?
Yeah, and then bring it back at some point?
Yeah.
Do those appointments? Yeah, that'd be fine.
I would make the motion to approve with those changes. Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Okay. Regular agenda, update by Amador County Health Officer Dr. Rita Kerr on the COVID-19 situation in Amador County. This will be the last update we receive unless there's something else that extreme happens. Dr. Kerr, we see you.
Great, good morning. Are you able to hear me as well?
We can hear you fine.
Okay, thank you Chairman Brown and Board of Supervisors. I appreciate the opportunity to update you and our community on the current COVID-19 situation in Amador County. And I'm going to go ahead and ask Heather to bring up the slides. Thank you very much Jennifer, whoever's running the show over there. Since the last update report in January, the trend for circulating winter viruses continued downward. And regarding hospital impact, there are currently zero COVID-positive patients hospitalized at Sutter Amador compared to last year on the same date when Sutter Amador had 12 COVID-in patients, including three in the intensive care unit. To date, 436, which is an increase of eight since last month. Amador County residents are known to have been hospitalized because of COVID-19. And if you could back up to the previous slide, looking here at the overall census for the state, this is hospitalized patients who are either COVID-positive and flu-positive. The COVID's in red, the flu is in blue. Amador County is contained within the greater Sacramento region, which is in the center of the top row. And overall, the trend is decreasing, so that's a good thing. The next slide shows that statewide, the, wait till she moves to the next one, thank you. The respiratory virus hospital burden compared to prior seasons. The current is in the lower left in the solid sort of golden colored line there. And you can see that it went up. It did not get anywhere near the Omicron surge last winter or the winter surge from the first season of COVID. It actually was close to where our peak was for the 2017, 2018 flu season before COVID, but it is declining nicely. So this is one of the metrics that we've been following is to say, you know, is COVID starting to act more like our usual respiratory virus season as we're making decisions about when to change different advice and regulations and requirements, particularly for healthcare facilities? Moving on to the next slide, this is our local EpiCurve, which you've gotten used to seeing over the last many months. The confirmed cases are the blue bars and the probable cases, which means they had a supervised antigen test but never got a confirmatory laboratory test. Those are in the green, and you can see that overall the trend is downward. Nine known active, which is what we consider new cases that have been reported to us in the past 10 days for Amador County residents, but with the caveat that since the OptumServe test site blows last month, more people are self-testing for COVID, and this leads to undercounting as case counts do not include self-tests that are usually not reported to public health. So it's really not possible to say this is a comparison of apples to apples over time. Really, the testing landscape has changed, and that affects what appears on this graph. That therefore, we will be sunsetting publishing this at the end of the month. Mule Creek State Prison, which does confirmatory lab testing on all their inmate cases, has had 29 new inmate COVID cases in the past 14 days. Moving to the next graph, relative again to prior winters, and this is statewide data again, COVID is making up a smaller percentage of all respiratory, excuse me, of respiratory and all-cause deaths in the state of California. So it's a little bit tough to know what all the lines need, particularly, but the deaths are the, the background death rate in total is the sort of shaded gray area in the back. And then superimposed on that, you see the COVID cases in red. Influenza is way at the bottom in the gold color. And pneumonia in general is green. And acute respiratory distress syndrome, that's basically failure of the lungs requiring ventilation, is in the blue. So the lines are starting to converge. And one thing to be noted, to be aware of, is that pneumonia and COVID can coexist on a death certificate. And so some of that is reflected on this graph as well. If we go to the next slide, please, again, trying to compare what does, no, one more back. Thank you. What does this winter look like compared to prior seasons? And you can see that respiratory deaths in general, really, really high in that first year of COVID, 2020, 21, which is the orange bar on the top or the orange line on the top. 21, 22 was the golden line. And then this year is the bolder blue line with the dots. So again, we are seeing fewer respiratory deaths this winter compared to the last two seasons. Locally here, since last month's update, four additional COVID death-related death investigations have been completed. So we've investigated four more reports of deaths that could have been related to COVID. Of those four, one was determined that COVID did not cause or significantly contribute to his death. Three of them were confirmed to have died because of COVID. All were men, one in his 90s and two in their 60s, who both had significant underlying chronic medical problems. That brings the total of local confirmed COVID deaths to date to 90 Amador County residents and nine Mule Creek State Prison inmates. There's been no change in the number of probable deaths to date for Amador County residents. Three, since the start of the pandemic, have met that criteria. And public health offers heartfelt condolences to all who have lost loved ones because of COVID-19. Moving on to the next graph, this shows that across the United States, the COVID death rate remains higher for unvaccinated individuals and lowest for those who are boosted, particularly those who have gotten their updated bivalent booster. If you could move to the next slide, the reformulated bivalent boosters better match currently circulating strains of the novel coronavirus. Boosters are important to maintain protection against severe COVID-19 and lower the risk of long COVID symptoms. You should get a booster if your last dose of COVID vaccine was prior to September of 2022. If you've recently been infected with COVID, you may wait three months after the infection to get your booster. A COVID vaccine primary series must be completed before getting an updated bivalent booster dose. And you can may continue to choose a different vaccine for boosters than you got for the primary series. When you come to a booster appointment, please bring your vaccination card, a photo of it, or digital verification showing the dates and types of previous doses. COVID vaccine clinics continue to be held at the Health and Human Services Building on Tuesdays from 8:30 to 11:00 in the morning and Thursdays, 1:00 to 4:00 in the afternoon. Today is the last clinic being held in Suite 500. Future clinics will still be in the Health and Human Services Building, but located in the Public Health Suite, which is 400. Primary series and booster doses are available. Public Health has Pfizer, Moderna, and Novavax COVID vaccines in stock. Our current stock of Novavax expires at the end of this month, but we did get news and anticipate that that supply will be replenished. As the federally funded vaccine supplies run out, Public Health may not have every brand vaccine formulation available, but our goal is to maintain stock to provide at least one COVID vaccine option for each age group. You may visit myturn.ca.gov or call 833-422-4255 to schedule a vaccine appointment. Those who have appointments are prioritized, and walk-ins must arrive a half hour before the clinic end time. It's not too late to get your flu vaccine. Seasonal influenza viruses often circulate into the springtime, and occasionally we'll see another uptick in the later spring months, like in March. Public Health offers free flu shots. Walk-in visits are welcome at Suite 400 on the Tuesday morning and Thursday afternoons during those clinics. And COVID and flu vaccines can be given at the same visit. We do not have high-dose flu vaccine for age 65 and older at our Public Health clinics. If you want one of those, please check with your doctor or search the vaccines.gov binder tool for retail pharmacy availability of flu and COVID vaccines. Parents who are interested in having their six-month through four-year-old children vaccinated for COVID should talk with their doctor or may call Public Health at 209-223-6407 for an appointment. A parent or guardian must accompany the child to the visit. COVID vaccines and boosters remain free of charge for everyone at this time. Cost-sharing or copayment may commence once the federal COVID emergency ends in mid-May, depending on your health plan coverage. The mobile vaccine team continues to provide vaccination for homebound individuals who may schedule a nurse home visit by calling Public Health at 209-223-6407. Masks continue to be required when you're visiting healthcare settings, including at both vaccination and testing sites. You can move to the next slide, thank you. Moving on to COVID testing and treatment update. Again, the OptumServe antigen, excuse me, the OptumServe testing site, which was a resource provided by the state, was decommissioned and permanently closed after January 20th, 2023. We do still have no-cost antigen COVID self-test kits available. Four free test kits per household address can be ordered at covidtests.gov and are delivered by the postal service. Medicare and Medi-Cal allow pickup of free test kits at pharmacy windows, and private health insurance pays or reimburses for eight at-home test kits per month per enrollee. Antigen self-test kits are also available at Public Health, you can visit our front window, and local agency partners, including schools, are distributing test kits. The schools are sending them home for students and their families and staff. If you are sick, please follow self-isolation guidelines, inform your close contacts, and quickly seek medical advice to find out if antiviral treatment is recommended for you. Talk to your doctor, or California continues to provide free phone or video telehealth appointments. You're eligible for this service if you have symptoms and have been exposed to COVID, even if you haven't been able to get tested. Call the California COVID-19 hotline, which is 833-422-4255, or you may visit online covid19.ca/treatment. The telehealth provider will decide with you if you need a prescription for COVID antivirals. The oral COVID treatments are still available without cost-sharing or copay for the medication. Seek treatments while symptoms are still mild. Do not wait for your illness to get worse. There is growing evidence that treatment reduces the risk of persistent long COVID symptoms. If you don't feel great, please isolate and get tested to treat it and beat it. That's the last slide. Shut down the slides, and I have some closing remarks. As reported COVID cases decrease, the Amador County Cal Connect team has started doing post-COVID surveys to assess for long COVID symptoms. A survey is being sent via text message to those who recently had COVID, and a follow-up phone call interview is available for those that want to participate. Over the past three years, much has been learned about the novel coronavirus SARS-CoV-2 that causes COVID-19. Mitigation strategies include vaccination, ventilation, and use of personal protective measures, such as wearing a mask and frequent hand washing. Testing and antiviral treatments that are effective in preventing severe illness are available. Population immunity to COVID has increased due to vaccination and prior infection. Supply chain scarcity and hospital impact have become manageable. Therefore, the state of emergency for COVID-19 will be ending at the state level at the end of February 2023. The measures contained in the California Smarter Plan will be continued to keep COVID in check. Amador County Public Health is integrating the ongoing COVID response into our normal departmental workflow. In coordination with the Amador County Sheriff's Office of Emergency Services and County Council, we recommend that the board adopt a resolution to terminate the local COVID-19 health emergency proclamation at the February 28th, 2023 Board of Supervisors meeting. As our local COVID emergency response winds down, I would like to express sincere gratitude to the many individuals, healthcare providers, agencies, businesses, and organizations that contributed to our community's perseverance through this challenge. Amador County is resilient and stronger together as we continue the recovery phase. And I'd also like to note that there is an item on the consent agenda today, item six C, that will award a contract to a consulting firm that will facilitate the Public Health Departmental COVID-19 Emergency Response After Action Evaluation and Report Process. And be happy to address any questions at this time.
Question, just a big thank you to you and your staff for three years of hard work. Here, here. Yes?
Thank you.
Just one, one quick question. Dr. Kerr, the health emergency in California is ending, but the federal extends longer where, almost to May? Is that correct?
Correct. The federal government actually has a number of different emergency declarations. They did make a promise that they would give 60 days notice at a minimum to the states before ending the federal emergency declaration. And what this really kind of affects is some of the funding streams and some of the flexibilities that were allowed during the COVID response. It also affects the need for those who are covered by Medicaid, which in California is called Medi-Cal. Their need to recertify their eligibility every year was put on hold during the pandemic. So there is a backlog of individuals, and the state of California has already started working on that to have individuals recertify for their eligibility so they don't have lapses in coverage for their healthcare. And there are a number of other provisions that we're still evaluating and trying to figure out what it really means. But one of the main things that it means is that the way COVID is managed, for the most part, will be moving to the regular healthcare system. And public health in particular will be playing less of a front face, you know, frontline role and more of a support and backup role for uninsured or underinsured individuals going forward.
Which rules are we bound by more, the state or the federal?
Um, federal is always, you know, overarching. And then, you know, I, I think we have to look at it sort of the way we did back when we were under the blueprint. And when they always said, you have to follow the state rules, but you can be, you know, more aggressive at the local level. Again, we have to follow the federal rules, and then the state can, you know, implement more if they want to. For example, the Cal-OSHA standards for prevention of the spread of respiratory illnesses in general, including COVID-19, was just, was posted in mid-December and just ratified, I believe, the 3rd of February, and that will be in place for the next two years.
Okay, anybody, a public comment? Any zoomers?
Not at this time.
Okay, we will move on to five B. Agricultural Department presentation introduction of the new University of California Agricultural and Natural Resource staff members. There is a new farm advisor, a new livestock advisor, and a new woody biomass and forest production advisor.
Morning to the board.
Morning.
How are you guys today? Happy Valentine's Day. I'm wearing my love 4H hot shirt today in honor of that. We have a presentation. My name's Jolynn Miller. I am the Director of UC Cooperative Extension in the Central Sierra, which includes Amador County. And then I have a few people with us, they're going to present in a minute. Next slide, and we have a video just to start off with. I think. It's not coming through.
I can't get the bottom portion to move so I can play it. Just bear with me.
We tested it, I thought, all good. Probably it's, you're playing it, it looks like you're playing it from a PDF, not a, the PowerPoint itself, but. There we go, maybe. That should, oh yeah. Well, the interest of time, I'll just start. Um, so again, my name's Jolynn Miller. I'm the 4H Youth Development Advisor and the Central Sierra Director of UC Cooperative Extension. I'm here today to talk about some really cool things that are happening within UCANR locally and at the statewide level. The video that you were supposed to watch was a really basic introduction to UCANR. Most of you guys know who we are, but we are connected to the University of California through the land grant system. We receive federal, state, and local dollars to provide research-based information to the community here locally. So over the years, we have partners with the programs 4H, Master Gardeners. Master Gardeners, Master Food Preservers, we have farm advisors, and then we connect to a various, various statewide programs, like the UC Water Institute, the Institute for Organic Agriculture, and a bunch of other statewide programs that we are all connected to. So the great thing about UC Cooperative Extension is that we are living here locally in these communities, but we're connected to all of these resources across the state and across the nation. Every county in California is served by UC ANR, and every county or parish in the nation is served by some sort of cooperative extension office in connection to the land grant university in their state. So next slide. So currently, we have, you guys, I think all know Scott Onetto. He's the farm advisor. He's based here in Amador County. And some of the things that he wanted me to tell you about really cool innovative things that he's doing. He's working with ranchers locally on virtual fencing. So putting GPS collars on cows and creating virtual fences using GPS. He's really excited about that because he thinks that it'll help mitigate some of the fire, like the, having help grazing animals in fire areas. The other thing that he is doing is working with truffle growers in the region, which could be a potential new commodity and a new income and economic value. And then he's also collaborating with the local fire safe council to create a demonstration project on the Mitchell Mine Field Break that shows private landowners how to maintain their properties after mastication projects. So that's one of the things that Scott's doing. Suzie Coker is a Forestry and Natural Resources Advisor. She works on forestry management issues. And especially she's been integral in the state in helping prescribed burn associations get off the ground. And then my name's Jolynn Miller. I'm the 4H Youth Development Advisor. So on top of being the Director of UC Cooperative Extension, I also do youth development research. And one of the big projects that I'm working on is leading a nationwide project looking at keeping kids in 4H longer. We all know that 4H provides kids with really beneficial leadership and life skills. So how do we keep them in the projects longer? Today, I'm here to introduce you to three new advisors. Hardip Singh, Cindy Chen, and Flavi Adwan. Flavi is unfortunately not here today. She's at the Society of Range Management Conference. But in just a moment, I'll give them a chance to talk about the cool things that they're doing. Next slide. In recruitment, we have a Community Health and Nutrition Advisor, an Integrated Pest Management Advisor, and a Disaster Resilience Advisor. We're hoping with this thirty-two million dollar increase from the state government to UC Cooperative Extension, we're hoping to have these new advisors hired within the next year, year and a half, hopefully. And then staff members as well, so Master Food Preserver Staff, UC CalFresh Healthy Living Staff, and 4H Staff. I was talking to our analyst a few days ago, and I don't remember the exact percentage, but I think we're something at like thirty-three percent more staff in the region compared to just a year ago, which is pretty exciting. Next slide, please. So really just the details of this is that the small, the blue pie chart is what Amador County has been putting into the budget for UC Cooperative Extension. And all the other pie charts, parts of it are what you guys are getting in return. So through grants, through the, the university-funded advisors, through volunteer hours, through donations, through program fees, basically what Amador puts in, you guys are getting a lot back by this partnership. Next slide. You can see our staffing levels have increased over the years. When we started the multi-county partnership in two thousand and eleven, that was at the height of the recession, and there was a lot of cuts. And so at the time, there was only one advisor per four counties. So we only had four advisors in the four county region. And you can see currently, by the time we hire those next few advisors, we're going to have nine advisors in the four county region. So we're more than doubling the advisors since we started this MCP, a really great testament to the value of partnerships. Next slide. All right, so these are our new advisors. They're going to come up and give you just an introduction to themselves and what they plan on focusing on over the next few months. So Hardip.
Jolynn, hello, respected all. First of all, thank you all for all the support you are providing to UC Cooperative Extension. And thank you all for letting us introduce ourselves. So today I'll give a brief overview about my background and about my current position with the UC Cooperative Extension. Next slide, please. So I'm basically from Punjab, India. I was born and raised on a small family farm where I was helping my parents with the daily farming activities. That sparked my interest in agriculture. And I went to school at Punjab Agriculture University to do my Bachelor of Science in Agriculture. And while doing my BS in Agriculture, I became more familiar with the farming issues which we were facing back in Punjab. And I started looking for positions where I could study them in, in US because the farming issues which we were facing back in Punjab were very similar to here in California, such as drought, water salinity, water quality. It's not just the issues. We, we also share similar weather climate, soils, and topography as we have here in California as in Punjab. And in twenty eighteen, I came to US to do my masters. I worked on different research projects in almonds, pistachios. Citrus, I worked on controlled environmental agriculture studies. And after completing my masters, in twenty twenty, I started working with the UC Corporate Extension as an Assistant Specialist for Small Farms in Fresno. And my work during as an Assistant Specialist for Small Farms, I worked on different research projects on lemongrass, moringa, and bok choy. These are the specialty crop grown by small farmers in, in Fresno County. I worked on crop protection practices of, of, of these crops, such as irrigation, nutrient management, et cetera. And while my focus on research, I also helped the farmers during my work in Fresno with the healthy soil practices such as cover cropping, composting, hydro plantation, et cetera. And I also helped the farmers during COVID nineteen with the, with the different governmental programs such as COVID nineteen Food Assistance Program. I was providing farmers the technical assistance with the various programs during COVID nineteen. So with all that experience in small farms, I started my position as a Local Food Systems Advisor in June twenty twenty-two with the Central Sierra Cooperative Extension. And I'll be serving El Dorado, Amador, Tooluma, and Calaveras County at my current position. Next slide, please. And my primary area of focus at this position would be to maximize the environmental and community benefits later to the sustainability and competitiveness of local agriculture. And I'll be covering all of the growers in the Amador County growing crops commercially. Those are wine grapes, walnuts, or other forage crops. And in, in those crops, I'll be helping growers if I have, if they have any issues or need any information or education on pest management, nutrient management, irrigation scheduling, controlled environmental agriculture, et cetera, or even if they need any technical assistance with the organic farming certification, food safety, et cetera. So according to the reports, twenty twenty-one reports of California, according to reports of Department of Agriculture Amador, the total value of crops produced in Amador County was worth thirty-one US million dollars. And I'll be contributing straight to that industry for the successfulness, competitiveness of that farming business and industry in, in Amador County. So that was it. I'll let Cindy take over. Thank you.
Hello, Board of Supervisors. My name is Cindy Chen, and I am a Woody biomass and forest products advisor with the UC Corporate Extension. So I joined UCCE last September, and I have a PhD in forest, and forest science and wood products and from the University of Washington in Seattle. And I spent the last ten years in both the state of Washington and the state of Oregon doing wood products-related research. And my past work focused on wood products and wood products manufacturing, marketing, as well as evaluating the economic and environmental impact of the production of wood products, in particular mass timber products, which is a large-scale engineer wood product that can be used in the construction industry. Other than that, I also work, I also done work in Woody biomass research, including bio, bioenergy, biofuel. And I am originally from California. I did both my bachelor's and my master's at the University of California in Irvine. So I'm glad to be back to California. And right now, although I just started, I'm starting to learn about the community, and I see a lot of opportunities in Central Sierra. And my, my ultimate goal here at the Woody biomass and forest products advisor is to, um, next. Um, is to help the region develop a good, improve the utilization of Woody biomass and forest resources to create a community resilience through reduction of wildfire risks, as well as creating, improve the manufacturing process of the wood manufact- manufacturing industry. And also, I, so my long-term vision is to also increase public acceptance and public knowledge on how to improve the use of their, of the Woody biomass on their land, in particular for private landowners, as well as improve the manufacturing process for facility owners. And for the general public, I would like to conduct outreach and educational programs to educate the community about how to reduce fire risk on their property as well as the region. And also, I would like to help local students from high schools, community colleges, and create a long, long-term career path from high school to career and to help students who are interested in the forestry industry or the wood product industry to develop their skills and knowledge and to create a better, to give them a better opportunity to find a good career. And yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Cindy, just a second, a couple of comments. There was a biomass feasibility study performed by the Central Sierra Economic Development District, which is, the members are representatives from Amador, Alpine, Calaveras, Tooluma, and Mariposa Counties. And that's a public document that was, I guess, created last year by the Beck Group. So you might be interested in that. And then also there's the SURF, which is the California Economic Resiliency Fund. And they're, I'm, I'm not part of the committee going forward, but it was kind of constituted as in the Central Sierra Economic Development District. Or at least that, we're the point of contact. It was actually the state. But these are funds that, you know, eventually will be directed toward communities in the Central Sierra as well as the Eastern Sierra, even though we're called the Eastern Sierra District. But one thing that may come up is biomass. I, I don't know because I'm not going to be part of that working group. But I suspect that that's something to be aware of.
Yeah, thank you.
And you, you might want to incorporate into your work the political side, trying to educate the California Air Resources Board on biomass plants and getting them to accept it. Because right now, they're not very accepting of biomass plants.
Yeah, thank you.
I was gonna, did I what Richard said as far as that? It's, I think it's a real big problem because on biomass plants, the state says, hey, we're not interested in biomass energy. I was talking to a man who has a small sawmill, always over near that Lincoln area. He used to take material to Ampine. Ampine is gone. He says, he's got nowhere to take it now. So it's a big problem for him. He has like, kind of, it's, it's a small sawmill, and you got a lot of farmers have a lot of green waste. They don't have any place to take it. It's, and that, and that's something you might want to lobby the state on or see, see what you can find out there is why they're not supporting biomass better because the landfills are charging, I'm hearing a hundred and twenty-five bucks a ton for people to take Woody material there, and that's pretty cost prohibitive. But.
And that stuff that goes landfill just turns into methane eventually, so, which is the greenhouse gas.
There, yeah, there are definitely ways that we can, yeah, work, work together and.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And just a quick comment on that. You know, we're, we're not allowed to lobby, but we are definitely allowed to educate and, and provide research to, to, to lawmakers. So absolutely. And then Flavi is not here today. She's at the Society for Range Management Annual Conference. But Flavi Odwan is our new livestock and natural resources advisor. And when I mean new, I mean less than a month. Flavi just started in January. Flavi has a PhD in natural resources from the University of Arizona focusing in ecology management and restoration of rangelands and animal sciences. She's done a lot of research on grazing behavior, diet selection, meat characteristics of range fed. I don't know how to pronounce that because I am not the livestock advisor. They're Creole cattle in southeastern Arizona.
Creole.
Creolo. That's the kind of cattle that's adapted towards super dry and hot environments. She has seventeen years' experience with dairy and beef cattle in France and in Arizona, ten years' experience with Navajo Churro sheep, also a desert-adapted breed, and then ten years of experience in marketing lamb and beef directly to consumers. So one of the things, next slide, please, that I'm most excited about for Flavi is her expertise in being able to help some of our local farmers and ranchers bring their products to market. We have a real need and a lack of USDA certified meat processing plants in this community. And she understands that's one of the high priorities of things that she will be looking into, helping ranchers and supporting them in figuring out the next steps for that. She is also planning on, I think, doing workshops for small livestock owners, like goats, sheep, pigs, and then educating the citizens on the use of small livestock to prevent wildfire. And then she's hoping to increase net revenue for Amador County ranchers, provide educational tools to help the community with their projects, and then prevent or decrease potential impacts of fire in the county. So that's some of the work that she plans to be doing. I apologize that she was not here to present for herself. But we already had this scheduled by the time she started. So thank you so much again. We're just really excited. The only thing I'm here today is to introduce you to the three new advisors and all this really exciting stuff that's happening with UC Cooperative Extension across the state. Our increase in advisors across the state is skyrocketing. And then we're translating that locally by having more staff, more grants, and things like that. So when all is said and done, we're going to have, I think, forty-two advisors and staff in the Central Sierra region, where I think we started off with about twenty, twenty-five a few years ago. So pretty exciting stuff. That's all I have. Any questions?
When we had our meeting, I think last year.
Yes.
All the counties were concerned about more advisors, more costs, more costs on the counties eventually. And, and I get the tone from your presentation that you might be asking for more resources, money in the future to support.
So the last few years, I mean, if we, we can go back to that granting, and I didn't really want to talk too much about funding, but over the last ten years, we've had pretty steady funding, which means we've absorbed most, most of our staff and salary increases within our budget. And every time that I've even talked about asking for funding, the conversation has been from the Board of Supervisors and the CAOs in all four of the counties was, when is the state going to put in their resources? When is the state going to start supporting us locally? And so I'm here to tell you that the state is supporting us locally by almost doubling the support that they're giving to Amador County.
Well, right now, but the state also has a structural deficit.
They, they, so the, the proposed budget that just came through included keeping and retaining our thirty-two million dollar increase from last year.
This year. This year, but who knows what's going to happen in the future? I mean, what I'm hearing from lobbyists is this year, they're going to beg, borrow, and steal from every account they can to support ongoing programs. So I just want you to keep in mind, I mean, So I just want you to keep in mind, I mean, when times get tough, we don't add staff, we cut staff. So I appreciate the new advisors coming on, but some of the areas, and it was said in our meeting too, there is some redundancy going on in the programs and with other private and public sector out in the, out in the community that overlap in some of these areas.
Sure. I think the, the biggest thing and the biggest benefit to UC Cooperative Extension is that we bring the research to a lot of the programs that are happening. So we work really closely, like, I think one of the conversations that we had in our meeting last year was the Fire Safe Council. So UC Cooperative Extension works hand in hand with UC, with, with the Fire Safe Council to make sure that the programs and the, and the projects that they are doing is based and centered in research and science.
And, and the research is fine, but when you, as long as it's useful and put to use to support the initiative, so that when they get to the state level, like with the California Resources Board, it helps them understand that biomass is a critical effort put forth to help with climate change and to get rid of all of this material, otherwise would be laying out there, going against the ultimate goals.
Understood. Absolutely. And I agree. Our job is to educate everybody based on the research.
I got one more question on Flavi's, it says ten years' experience in marketing lamb and beef directly to consumers. Does she do, will she do more than lamb and beef? Because right now, chickens, eggs, other, other products are also useful to, to the producers and the consumers.
Yes. Her role is, is all livestock, the livestock advisor, so she will, I mean, she may not have the exact expertise in, let's say, poultry. I know that she does have some experience in poultry, but because of our connectedness to the university, we have a poultry specialist at UC Davis and things like that, she'll be able to use those connections to make sure that we're bringing those resources to the county and to our local ranchers.
Okay. Because we do have more people in the county locally that want to produce locally and sell locally.
A hundred percent. Yep, that's her, that's gonna be what her, her plan of attack is, is to help support the ranchers in all aspects of livestock, to be beneficial, to be profitable, and to bring economic development to the county. Absolutely.
Any other supervisors?
Thank you.
Anybody from the public?
Dana Jorgensen with State Senator Marie Alvarado Gill. I was gonna introduce myself earlier, but public comment went by so quickly today. That's not always a bad thing. I just wanted to recognize the debate you had. I know in the past, there has been a push and pull in the legislature for funding for these. Some of the prior members I worked for have worked on that. Senator Alvarado Gill did go to UC Davis, and this is something that she is very interested in. At the same time, I recognize you have concerns in future years, probably not this year, with being asked for more funds. And we would be very supportive of trying to have UC offer as much as they can, because they do great work while being sensitive to the county budget. And then just off the top of my head, something, I met Ms. Chin in Tooluma County on a tour. We had a, yeah, we had a great tour that day. I saw a documentary about mass timber buildings, and there is one being built in Portland, and it is, I think it was eight stories. And that is something that, that could be something that we could explore going into the future. I think there's gonna be a push for some of that. And I recall, there's one sawmill in Oregon, and it's a smaller one, and it was certified, or the first one that's doing this. And I believe it was outside of Medford, I think it was in Riddle, Oregon, kind of popped in my head. Very interesting concept, and I think some of our, there might be a demand for that product from some of our probably urban areas, and that's a high-value product. If we can jump on that, man, we, I just realized there's no sawmill facilities in Amador County anymore, and I, yeah, kinda.
No biomass? No sawmill?
Yeah.
Great site in Martel.
Huh?
There's a great site in Martel.
Yes, there is. So I'm aware of that, and to me, as a citizen in this community, that's actually very disturbing, just me as a citizen. So we're open, any ideas? I know Senator would be interested in trying to help with that as well, so. And then on another note, I've talked to some of you on some issues, just came here today to be accessible and listen to what other people are having to say. So that's it.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, thanks.
You know, I will say one thing on that. As far as not having any wood processing facility in this county is pretty sad. We need them, and you're looking at jobs, but yeah, the, oh, the mass timber is really an interesting concept, look, look at what structural capabilities is incredible. Only problem is it takes, they utilize mainly pretty much dug fur, and we don't have huge amounts of dug fur in this area of California. We have some, but probably not enough to support a facility, but it's, wish we did. It's stronger than steel, more fire resistant, lighter. It's pretty incredible.
Anybody on Zoom?
Not at this time.
Okay. We'll move on to five C, discussion of possible action relative to request changes in the salaries of Amador County elected officials.
Jim Rooney, Amador County Assessor, speaking for the elected. This is Kim Grady, clerk recorder, and Sheriff Gary Redmond. And we are respectfully requesting a cost of living adjustment, which is very similar to what the management has received, and that is pretty much our request. If there's any questions or concerns, we'd be happy to address them.
Might, Mr. Eylee, just for public consumption, you might want to state what management received?
Right. The management received two four percent raises, starting in October of last year, and they'll receive another four percent in October of this year, which is the same amount that was given in the rank and file, SEIU. Law enforcement was given, we're, we're given a three-year deal, which is six, three, and three, so that was twelve percent over three years, which is four percent per year. So that's where we are.
You know, I have a question. We have a memo from the electeds to Mr. Eylee. I guess you're talking about receiving the same four and four as management received. Now, it talks about, you're also requesting that sheriff receive at least a ten percent increase. Is that additional on top of the four and four?
Yes. I don't know if you remember, but we received a, an adjustment a little over a year ago that included all electeds except the sheriff. The sheriff wasn't included in that.
And the DA?
No, the DA was. Everybody except the sheriff.
Okay.
So the sheriff's in a little bit of a different situation than we are, and this brings him, or that position, up a bit.
Why wasn't he included last time?
You know, I guess that would be, my understanding was that, uh, he, well, I'm gonna let him.
Maybe he can answer that.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Gary.
So last year, when this came out, Supervisor Oneta was during the election, and I was not going to ask for any type of increase during an election year.
I don't think any smart person would have.
No, I don't think that was prudent. The last time the sheriff's position was adjusted was in 2019, and currently, currently I'm one percent below my undersheriff.
Well, you know, um, to be blunt, I don't respect, I don't agree with that. Election year or not, if it's where you're at, it's where you're at. I wouldn't, winning an election is not a reason to get an increase. As far as the four and four, either management got that, I'm okay with that.
So you're okay with the undersheriff making one percent above me? Is that correct?
Um, yes, it is. Two things there. One, you could maybe lower the undersheriff's salary a little bit, or number two, if you look at full compensation, I believe you're being made, you make, it's probably about, depends if you look at transparent California numbers, or if you look at the Amador County numbers, you make about fourteen, I'd say thirteen thousand dollars a year more total compensation than undersheriff, is that correct?
So base salary is one percent. We go off base salary. Incentives for this position, anybody can walk into this position as an elected, and that's why we always go off base salary.
Sure, but I'm saying, is it correct? You make about, according to county numbers, not transparent California, because transparent California, it's a question that have is why it's so much more than it is by the county numbers. I think it may be the pension debt. It looks like total compensation, undersheriff gets three hundred and twenty thousand, six hundred and sixty-one dollars. That's the numbers we have in front of us. And the sheriff gets three hundred and thirty-three thousand, nine hundred and five dollars. By my math, you make about thirteen thousand, two hundred and roughly fifty dollars more than undersheriff.
You're, you're including all of the unfunded liability and county costs. That's not even remotely what my salary is, Supervisor Oneta. So a salary survey was done with Calaveras, which showed the surrounding counties, including Tooluma, Calaveras, Amador, El Dorado, Yuba, Stanislas, all determined that the salaries of the sheriff of Calaveras and Amador was thirty-seven percent below the medium. The Calaveras sheriff is now twenty-seven percent above what I make. He is not the coroner or the Office of Emergency Services. I have both those responsibilities. So I don't think it's prudent for me to ask for twenty-seven percent increase to compare my salary to Calaveras, even though I have two of the responsibilities that he does not. I simply am asking for a ten percent increase.
Eighteen percent?
Ten percent. I'm asking for ten percent increase.
Okay, so eight percent COLA.
So you're, you're talking about the.
And ten percent increase.
And also to be included in the COLAs, yes.
Yeah.
Sheriff, just to be clear now, the undersheriff has already got four percent, right?
That's correct.
And you're one percent under, so if you got a four percent, then you'd be three percent above.
That's correct.
If I'm following correctly.
Yes, sir.
So then you might only need another seven to get ten percent above.
That's correct.
Okay. Wanted to be clear on.
This is a request only.
And they went back to October. Were, are you looking for that too, or?
No, we're, we're simply asking retroactive, starting in January.
For the first of this year? Okay. Well, that helps too.
Supervisor X? The, the adjustments she received last year were comparable to other counties in the region.
Actually, the same as Calaveras.
Okay. So.
Calaveras was what we were aiming for.
Okay.
Compared.
All right. And right now, that's still the situation?
They've been getting raises.
Has Calaveras bumped theirs up at all, or?
They have. They consider, continue to increase theirs. They've been already three percent, three and a half percent a year for four years.
Four years.
Okay.
And I might add that I know they're our neighbor, but they're not known for being the most fiscally responsible operation in the California. So that needs to be tempered.
Which, which goes back to why I'm not asking for a twenty-seven percent.
You know what I'm talking about.
Well, can I? Hold on. Go ahead. Yeah, I just think the argument of, you should have asked for the raise last year. No one with half a brain would have asked for an increase, and we've been through this over the years. Board of Supervisors doesn't do that either. When we were talking about adjustments to our salary, nobody wanted to do it during an election year. I think that's just common sense.
I wouldn't agree. You may not want to, but I think if it's going forward, if elected officials are asking for, for COLAs, increase, whatever, election year or not, if you're in that position and everybody's doing it, you should do it.
I wish I could have kept good notes on our arguments in the past when we were looking at Board of Supervisor's salary, because I, as I remember, no one on the board wanted to talk about it if they were coming up for election. It's almost a sure death.
Richard, I don't, I don't agree with that. Where I'm looking, one thing I'm looking at is.
You don't remember correctly.
I got a pretty good memory, Richard. We've got a lot of bills to pay. I don't mind paying a fair salary to whatever employee it is. I think, and I understand that's not total take-home pay, I get that, some of it's retirement and stuff like that, maybe future medical, and that's a lot of the pay, so I get that. We've got deputies that are, say they're not being paid enough. I look at what our overhead cost, our basic management costs are compared to the deputies. There's a big discrepancy there. And I understand if you're running an operation, the decisions you make have a lot of bearing on how, how a unit runs. So I understand that. So I understand receiving more pay. You look at what a normal salary is in Amador County, I'd say a lot of people are making forty, fifty, maybe sixty thousand a year. You start seeing government salaries get up, two hundred, two fifty, maybe three hundred. I have a lot of heartburn over that. Something else I'd like to look at, maybe in the future, is having base salaries where a person makes X amount a year, all employees, and if the county has a good, is doing good, things are well, maybe they have a bonus that, that year, they do well. If we have rough years, okay, maybe they don't get as big a bonus, maybe not any at all, and that's the way we can control our costs, that's when we keep all of our employees Otherwise, we have good years, people want more money, I don't blame them. When bad years come, I don't see people take less money. What happens is then we lay off the newer employees, and then we don't have enough, enough employees to do our job. But I just, and I understand maybe other places are paying more money, but if you look at the private sectors paying, most private sectors, then we come close generally to what a lot of government agencies pay. So I, I just, I think it's too much money. I don't, I don't agree with the ten percent, Gary, or Sheriff Redmond. I think it's too much. And I think maybe, or the undersheriff pay would be more, I'd like to see some compaction in the sheriff's office. I'd like to see deputies come up some, and the management stay where it's at.
So there, there's a tremendous amount of compaction. So when a sergeant is promoted to lieutenant, they don't start, start at step A, they start usually at step C or D. A lieutenant right now, if he was to get promoted to captain, would start at the top step. That's how compacted it is. So there is a huge compaction. Now you're asking me to have my undersheriff to cut his, his wages, so I don't, I'm gonna make more than him, that doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me.
Let me, let me ask you, what does the average patrol deputy make roughly?
What it costs the county is around a hundred and thirty-five thousand. That's what it costs the county.
And so what's a sergeant, about two hundred thousand?
Uh, no. It's starting off around a hundred and sixty thousand for what the county cost is.
So you got like, maybe a thirty thousand dollar difference there between them?
Roughly.
I don't see that being a big amount of compaction.
I'm talking when we get into sergeant from lieutenant to captain, and then to undersheriff. That's where the compaction is. So we have a huge retention problem, recruitment problem. At some point, the people that are trying to get in this career absolutely look at the future of what do the sergeants make, what do the lieutenants make, captains, et cetera.
I'm sure they do.
Most of them want to aspire to get into those positions of added responsibility. They want to get paid and make more money. What you just proposed would absolutely decimate law enforcement if we had a system like that. We cannot effectively retain, recruit people to Amador County based on what we are paying them, which is why I fought so hard to get the deputies the twelve percent, which was another factor of why I was not going to go in during an election year, also at the same time while I was trying to get the. Also, at the same time, while I was trying to get the deputies a raise. I wanted actually fourteen to sixteen percent. Those are the conversations I had with, uh, with our CAO Chuck Ely. I understand being fiscally responsible, that it was agreed upon on a twelve percent.
What I was saying, Sheriff Redman, was I'd like to see the deputies come up some and see that management stay where it's at. Um...
Which absolutely makes zero, zero sense Supervisor Onetto. How do you, how do you bring up the deputies yet you, you refuse to pay management who is doing behind the scenes, salaried positions, they don't get overtime? We had a stabbing on Sunday. Guess who was working on Sunday, including myself, half my management team? This is what we do behind the scenes to make everything run, run efficiently and effectively. That is our jobs. Otherwise, the wheels will fall off. You have to pay those people. That's the cost of these decisions.
How many, how many captains, lieutenants, and sergeants have you lost recently? Compared to how many deputies we've lost recently? We've lost a lot of deputies.
Yes, we have. How many deputies have we lost because of what the sergeants, lieutenants, and captains get paid? Though, that we'll never know.
No, I, no, I asked, how many sergeants, lieutenants, and captains have we lost recently? I can't think of hardly any.
Generally, they, they retire.
Yeah.
So, be, so because people are not leaving, at, at that point in their career, they're set in, in the career. They're not going to leave. But at, at the same time, they want to make more money. They don't want to go in and start at E-step instead of starting at A-step. We are one of the only few organizations that actually have a compaction issue as, as great as this. One of the few. This is not an industry standard. We're not asking for anything abnormal.
Sheriff, if I may add here is that, um, I, I've got a little pushback on this. So, I'm also salaried. Last February, I worked thirty-two days straight, uh, storm recovery. So, I take a little exception to your, um, statement of, oh, you were out on a Sunday. You know, how many times have you texted me and I've answered you back? Twenty-four, seven. So, I'm on the same page as you are, but I make a whole mess less than you do. So, I take, you know, definite exception to that comment that you've given. You know, my total pay package, as I look at transparent California, is eighty-six thousand dollars. My truck is sitting out there four days a week and on the Friday, I'm only sitting there working from home. So, I am definitely working as much as you are to a point.
Never once did I say you are not working as hard as myself. I was making a comparison of what it takes to be a salaried person, part of the administrative team in the sheriff's office, Supervisor Brown. I know you work hard. So do I. I was with you during that whole storm.
Yes, you were, but you weren't out there in that, that pile out there that I was doing the tractor work.
And last time I checked, we have two completely different jobs.
Yes, we do.
I think we're getting a little off the rails here.
Yes, sir.
We're supposed to talk about money and compensation. Would you be happy with a four, four and a seven, Sheriff? Um, and everybody else gets a four and four. So, that's a given. That's, everybody, the cost of living's gone crazy. I understand that. And I thought we just bumped your salary about four months ago and Chuck reminded me it was a year and eight months ago. So, time does fly. And I supported the ten, I support it now, but I've, we have to be as fiscally responsible. There's some rainy days coming. All that free money from the last couple of years, and I know you kicked some in to help with projects. I'm not denigrating that, but would that seven percent then get you the ten, you'd have the ten percent, just barely, but you would have the ten percent compaction solved?
Yes, Supervisor Crew. That would be more than acceptable. Like I said, this was only a request, a starting point. That's all.
When you're ready for a motion, I'll make one.
Well, we need to go to public comment right now. Oh.
All right, all right. Hold on, hold on.
Sorry, Sheriff. When, um, when we came a year and a half ago, we felt we were very far behind and we were. And you know what? You guys were very fair and we really appreciated the consideration you gave us. At that time, the sheriff, he didn't get that twenty-plus percent increase. He thought it was better that he didn't pursue it at that time. I personally thought, back then, he should have got that twenty percent, just the way the rest of us got it. It would have been fair. And in, in this respect, I agree with Supervisor Onetto, that it should have been done for all of us, rather than, I mean, election year or not, rather than leave one person out. He's behind us twenty-plus percent or, and Calaveras. And I understand the idea about being fiscally responsible because I know that assessments, even though they've gone up nearly eight percent last year, they're not gonna go up eight percent every year. Um, although the, I'm surprised the real estate market is as stable as it is. But I think that, um, personally, the sheriff's position has been neglected in this response and, um, I, when we were proposing this letter or composing this letter to give to you, uh, I changed some of the wording. Gary wanted, or the sheriff wanted to ask for, uh, ten percent and I changed it. I said, at least ten percent. I always felt it was a little unfair that, uh, he was left, or that position was left behind. And that's all I'm gonna say about that. By, by the way, thank you. We really appreciate your consideration because the board has given us good and fair consideration. And it, it is, it has been very much appreciated.
Okay. Did you have a comment? Sorry.
Uh, I have some questions. Uh, so we, we raised the salaries of all the electeds, what, a year and eight months ago, Chuck? I thought it was more like a year ago, but...
Well, that's when we did it. It went retro, uh, a, a bit, I believe. Uh, I think it was, yeah.
And during that time, were we bargaining with the SEIU and all those units?
I don't remember.
Okay, 'cause, um, it seemed like we weren't doing any bargaining at that time and now we've done bargaining here. So, I, I think it's reasonable that Sheriff Redman received the same bump up that the other electeds did. Um, that'll help with the compaction. Uh, my question is, is, you know, the four and the four, are they, is that something that, um, you know, that they qualify at this time? Um, you know, we just gave them a raise. So, you know, maybe a two and a two.
May I, um, say something? Yeah. News reports say inflation's at about eight percent. I'm looking at things, to me, it looks like fifteen to seventeen or eighteen percent. Uh, four percent, uh, is, consideration is appreciated. Four percent means we're falling behind a little less slowly. Um, and we, we thought we were being very, um, reasonable by saying, look, um, people are receiving four percent, the management is. Um, seems fair that, um, we ask for similar, uh, and...
I have no problem with four percent, the four and four.
Thank you, okay.
You know, what are...
Yes.
Couple things. Um, I will say the elected officials, I think that the county is fortunate to have. Um, I like working with them. They do a good job. I think they do a, a very good job. So, I, I appreciate that, your work. Um, one thing I do look at too is, you know, we, the board represents, we represent the public. That's, that's our job. Um, I know people out there that have a million dollars, two million dollars, five million dollars invested in their businesses, um, manufacture widgets. Um, my district, there's, people have a lot of grapes. People have a lot of cattle. Um, quite honestly, the, the great people lost their butts last year. I think some are borrowing money to stay in business and they got a lot of money invested. And they've had some good years way back when, but they've had a lot, they've had a struggle for a lot of years. Been a hard time. Um, I run cattle. Cattle people for ten years. I don't know if they borrowed money to stay in business, but what they got invested in, in the work they do, they made minimal. So, I, I look at that. So, you see people have, let's say, two million bucks invested and they're damn lucky if they make a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. Um, and then I see people working other jobs, what they make. I just think, I don't mind paying a good salary, a fair salary. You gotta look at all the perspectives, what's out there. Um, and yeah, maybe Calaveras is more than us. Um, that's okay. I know from the past, board members and I, we had a saying, whatever Calaveras does, we do the opposite. And it seemed to work pretty good for us. Um, so, the four and four, I'm fine with, across the board, for everybody. Um, Gary, I have real heartburn over, over that ten percent. Um, I'm sorry.
Okay, let's go to public comment. Oh, do we have any Zoomers?
Not at this time.
Okay, bring it back to the board.
All right, Mr. Sheriff, I'm prepared.
Okay.
To make a motion that we accept the four and four for the elected officials and make a seven percent adjustment to the sheriff's salary to avoid the compaction issue with the under sheriff. And back to January one of this year.
I would, uh, just for clarification, on the sheriff, would it be four and four with a seven on top of that, or?
Yeah.
Okay. When, when would the seven be this year?
Yeah, it would come, well, January one. Retroactive to that.
I'll second that.
Okay, so under discussion, just, I will support, I'd support four and four. I won't support the seven, so.
And, um...
Seven additional for the, for the sheriff.
I'm sorry, just to answer the question Supervisor Axe had, uh, the previous raise went into effect, uh, December twenty-sixth of twenty-one.
But we went through the process last year, correct?
I think, yeah, it was, I think it was in January of twenty-two.
And we weren't negotiating with any of the other units that they...
I don't think we had opened it yet.
Okay, call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, three ayes. Nay?
Nay.
Okay.
Sheriff's vote.
Said nay.
Nay.
Three, two, and, uh, on is approved. Wait, and does that have to be a four, four fifths?
No.
Okay, thank you. So, that is approved and then we're on to 5D.
Well, uh, Mr. Chairman, the 5D was, uh, intended just to be an update from, uh, our Director of Solid Waste on the, uh, an update on the thirteen eighty-three, um, uh, implementation. The, um, unfortunately, uh, Jeff got double booked today and he's not here. So, I was gonna, uh...
Push this on to the next meeting.
Push this on to the next meeting, but you've got his memo and, and, uh, I could read that to you, but I don't think that's gonna be any better than you reading it yourself.
Could you with some milk and cookies?
Uh, so, um...
Say it the way he does it, you know?
The, the struggle we're all gonna have to deal with as this really gets implemented, it's gonna be a pain, uh, for all, everyone, uh, as they try and divert organics to, uh, from the landfill. And, uh, the restaurants are gonna, are gonna pay a price, but everybody else is gonna have to, to deal with it too.
Okay, on to, we're gonna postpone this. Okay.
We'll, we'll bring it back. It's something that needs to be discussed and, uh, that's discussed.
I don't know why, why we need to bring it back. I mean, it's just laying out the budget where he's spending this money.
I think it's, it's more of a, uh, everybody understanding what, what we're...
It's, it's gonna be affecting to everybody.
If you don't want me to bring it back, I don't have to.
No, we can bring it back. Okay, 5E, uh, minutes. Any changes?
I'll move approval with minor changes. I submitted my changes.
Yeah, very minor.
Motion approved with minor changes.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed? Okay, approved and this will complete the meeting.